Good evening. It is Monday, July 14th, 2025. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Welcome to our regular meeting. Please, we invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have three sets of meeting minutes to review and approve. The first, June 9th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the Monday, June 9th, 2025 Board of Education meeting minutes? Second, any comments or corrections on these minutes? I only had a not was mentioning a very minor one halfway through page four, right before 9.3, right before 9.3, on a motion made by Dr. Mr. Delventura and seconded by Mrs. Reader. All right, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, and I know we didn't have the full board, so we'll have some abstentions, but all those in favor of approving the Monday, June 9th, 2025 Board of Education meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed and abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, so Ms. Fenelosa and Ms. Baldwin abstain. Next, the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 Guilford Board of Education Workshop Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second.
All right, any corrections or comments? I actually noticed at the very top, I think Fenelosa is spelled incorrectly.
I'm sorry.
You just need an extra, an extra L in there.
And not to be like crazy, but it's Jen with one N.
No, that's fine.
We'll get both of them. Thank you.
Any, any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 Board of Education Workshop Meeting Minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I am an abstention. I was not at the meeting.
Stantion.
And Mr. Skreta. All right. Finally, meeting minutes for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, special meeting Guilford Board of Education. This was an executive session. Motion to approve?
Summer second.
Any corrections? All right, this was a smaller group. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and abstentions?
Stantion.
So Mr. Brooks, Mr. Skreta, Mr. Delventura, and Ms. Peck are abstentions. Thank you. I can repeat that if that's helpful. Also, okay. All right, we are up to item four, public comments on topics on the agenda. We actually don't have anyone in the public here, so we are going to move right on to number five, which is review and approval of expenditures for the month of June 2025. Ms. Baldwin?
Thank you very much. The expenditures for the month of June 2025 were $10,297,270.45. This represents 98.8% of the budget as compared to last year, which was 99.79. There was a tremendous amount of revenue for the month in the amount of $215,856.38. This includes things from excess cost Medicaid, pre-K tuition, non-resident tuition, and the, nope, the transportation, magnet transportation grant and tuition from Clinton. So we had a lot of sources of revenue for the month. Salaries were in line with the prior year. Employee benefits were higher than the prior year. Purchase services are lower than the prior year. In tuition, it is lower. That is partly due to the excess cost grant received from the state in the amount of $140,191.78. Supplies and materials are lower than the prior year. Capital is lower, and we are still expecting a payment from the capital lease of $113,442.49. Transportation is lower than that last year. That again is due to excess cost grant money received in the amount of $39,242.22. The warrants that were submitted are totaling $2,479,860.55.
Excellent. Thank you. We did, in the Operations Committee meeting that happened just prior to this meeting, talk extensively about both the financial report and the warrants, but I will pause to see if my colleagues have anything to add. No? All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the June 2025 financial reports for fiscal year 2425.
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay, that's unanimous vote. Thank you. We are up to communications. Does anyone have communications that they received they wanted to share?
We got a lot of emails about Cox First Grade.
Right.
And I know that both you and Dr. Freeman have responded to those emails. You know, this is something that we did discuss a lot in our budgets, which started in October. So it was something that was talked about every month up until the point it was pushed out to the referendum, and then it passed the referendum.
And I'll be touching on it again during my report.
Perfect. So it's just a reminder for the folks out there that are watching, if you have something you want addressed in the school budget, the time to get started is October. So now is the time to start talking about next year, whether or not.
Yep. And we do have, for those unaware, we, every fall in October, have a Board of Education meeting in which the community, parents, et cetera, can come and identify items or processes or things that they would like included in the budget. This is before a budget has been fully drafted. And then again, once a full budget is brought to the Board of Education by Dr. Freeman and the administration, in the beginning of January, we hold two public forums at the end of January in which parents, community members, et cetera, can come and address specific line items or other items. And then, of course, lastly, we are always available by email. Any other communications? I think that summed it up, but that was my, yeah, okay. Number seven, our student representatives, I hope are enjoying the summer and are not with us at the moment. So I am turning it over to Superintendent Report. Dr. Freeman.
Thank you very much. And I do have a number of items to touch base on this evening. The first is just to inform the board that Ms. Chaff and I have approved an exchange student to join us at Guilford High School next year. We will be welcoming an incoming 11th grader from Germany, who will be living with a host family here in Guilford and joining us at Guilford High School. We have received all the appropriate paperwork. We are excited to extend the approval, and it's my responsibility to inform you of such, and we're excited to afford the opportunity and to have that opportunity to host the student here with us this year.
Great.
Yep. So happy to share that. Also, wanted to give an enrollment update, and so just wanted to touch a little bit on the conversation that we just had around communications. Specifically over the summer, we want to spend some time updating you on elementary enrollments and what great class sections look like. I want to inform the board that already we have had to extend an additional classroom position beyond the, what was budgeted and the budget that we approved back in. So I'd like to draw your attention to the kindergarten sections at Lakes. This year, after some extensive conversation during the first round of budgeting, and then after the Board of Finance made some reductions to our budget, we had budgeted for 11 kindergarten sections, not for 12 this year, and Lakes is outstripping those numbers. We had hit 60 students at Lakes before the end of the school year. And so in early summer, I approved an additional section with 60 students in four sections. We will be looking at kindergartens of 15 at Lakes. As soon as I approved that addition, the enrollments stopped at Lakes. So we haven't moved up to 16 or 17. That's just Murphy's Law, and that's the way it works every time. But we still have all of August ahead of us, and we often get enrollments even in early September. But Lakes is set to accept any other incoming students. I also want to draw your attention to three other sections that we are keeping close watch on. One, we just spoke about at Cox. Last year, we offered three kindergarten sections of 13s at Cox last year. We made very clear as we went through the budget process that as those kindergarten sections moved to first grade, that we would be looking at two first grade sections of 21 and 22. That is within the board recommended class sizes of 16 to 22 for first grades. But I want to point out how close it is. So we are watching that enrollment very carefully. We actually have some anticipation that the size may decrease in grade one at Cox between now and the end of the summer. So again, we're watching it very carefully. But should a family with first grade triplets move into the Cox, the Cox region, then we will be looking at the necessity of extending a class, a possible class section there. I want to draw your attention to the kindergartens at Leet for exactly the same reason. We, the recommended kindergarten sizes in the board policy are 15 to 20. Leet is right on the edge. Now, the difficulty there, the difference between 40 and 60, is that 60 in three sections is 15, but, sorry, 60 in four sections is 15. To take that 40 and move it to three sections will give us sections of 13, 13, and 14 next year. And again, Murphy's Law, we're not right, we've gotten to that number, and we've sort of stalled there at Leet. So we're watching it really carefully. And additionally, I want to draw your attention to the fourth grade section at Leet as well. This was not a budgetary item. This was a decision that Mr. Seal and I made, where there had previously been only two sections at grade two and three sections at grade four. We saw a reduction in the class at fourth grade. That fourth grade as the third grade section was 48 last year. We saw a decrease from 48 to 45 while that second grade class was in fact inching up a little bit. So Mr. Seal reassigned teachers within the building. There was no budgetary impact. You now see second grade classes that are appropriate. I'll also remind you that Leet will be housing the ABA program district-wide this year, and some of those students mainstream into those second grade classrooms. That was a really thoughtful move. We are continuing to watch that grade four, however. The upper limit for grades three and four in board policy, the range is 18 to 24. So we've got room for at least three more students to move in there, but we're keeping an eye on those three sections and wanted to let you know. I've spoken to a number of parents, both by phone and by email, and let them know as well. We will continue to watch these sections through August, and if we see a necessity, we will add additional unbudgeted sections. Again, we're currently one FTE above budget already with the change that we made at Lakes. If we need to add other sections, we will. I'm really hopeful that we won't be adding three unbudgeted teaching sections at the elementary. We're watching and we are monitoring that as the summer unfolds, and wanted to leave room there for questions.
Just go ahead. If, in like the grade one at Cox, where we're looking at higher numbers than at Jones Lakes and Leet, do they get additional support staff? Like, is it, does it, do they get extra help? Like, is there a person that kind of wanders through there more often than other places?
No. So they will receive coaching support. They will receive interventionist support. Coaching support is broadly for all of the teaching staff. Interventionist support is specifically targeted by student need. Paraprofessional support is there to support essentially primarily students with special needs as they move in and out of the classrooms fluidly. But we have classroom ranges, and we fully suspect, we fully believe that our teachers are capable of supporting those ranges. I signed a third grade teacher last week who's coming to join us and looking at third grade classes in our district of 20s and 19s. She taught a class of 30 last year. Even these high numbers are low by state standards, and they're exceptionally low by national standards. So the quick answer is no. A first grade class of 22 students, I have every confidence that our first grade teachers are trained, prepared, and supported appropriately to support those numbers.
Thank you.
I mean, I sympathize very much with the first grade parents' concerns, right? Because it's hard when the kids are so little to go from such small classes to what they deem to be big. But just to point out, I know Moira and I both had children who just graduated this year, who, when they were in first grade, it was four sections of over 20 kids in each section. Yeah. And, you know, to the credit of the school district, there's a lot of people that do go in and out of those classrooms. You know, whether it's the social workers in there to talk to other, you know, whether they're there for one child or multiple children. The elementary schools really do a good job of sending people in and out of the classrooms, and that if there's any concerns, I'm confident that the teachers know how to reach out and that other people also have eyes on those over to take care of anything that they may see. It stinks to have the class that big. I get it, but it happens.
It's difficult when you, when you had 13 last year and you're going to have 21 this year.
They had the lowest, they had the lowest.
Yes, they had the smallest sections.
And really low. I mean, just not traditionally. We don't typically see classes that low.
And I think we questioned that as a board, wondering why you didn't mix them into two, but.
Well, and right, it's that 20 and two, so to make three sections in kindergarten would have given us kindergartens of 20 and 21, which would have been one too high. So forced to violate that board policy, I prefer to violate it going smaller than going above, but then moving into first grade. And quite honestly, the difficulty becomes when we create those sections in kindergarten, you have a section of 13, and then if in first grade that goes up to 21, that feel, I mean, a parent pointed out to me, that's a 50% increase. It is. I recognize that.
It feels.
But if we don't change it in one and two, then it gets to three and four, where now the cap is 24. Do we maintain classes of 13 all the way through, or where do? And so it's, it is the, it's the balancing act that we do. And again, I have every confidence in our teachers, in the supports that we have in place, in our principals, to make sure that those classrooms are, that those teachers are prepared and those classrooms are supported as they should be. And again, I can only say that even the big numbers in Guilford aren't big by state standards and are not big by, by national standards.
Yep. Well, thank you for sharing this with us.
Happy to share that. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about the, the funding issue, the grant funding issue that has been playing out. So on June 30th, school districts across the country were informed that title grant monies that we were scheduled to receive on July 1st were being withheld. So first, I want to highlight those dates. We receive the title grants annually on July 1st. Those are dollars that were built into our budgeting assumptions this year. We were informed that on June 30th, those grants were being withheld. It was a total dollar amount of $6.8 billion nationally that was withheld on June 30th, and we were informed of that withholding on June 30th. We were told that those dollars were going to be reviewed to see if they are in alignment with the administration's priorities. We don't know if those funds are being canceled. We don't know if they're being delayed by weeks. We don't know if they're being delayed by months. But that was $6.8 billion annually that we learned about the day before we were to receive it. Connecticut's share of that $6.8 billion is $53.6 million. Education dollars that school districts in Connecticut had budgeted and planned for that are being withheld. Today, we learned that Connecticut and 24 other states and the District of Columbia are suing the Trump administration to receive those dollars. Those dollars were approved by Congress. They're being held by the executive branch for review. I want to point out, before I move on to the next level and talk about the Guilford portion of the Connecticut portion, I want to point out that those dollars being withheld are disproportionately impacting students who do not live in Guilford or towns like Guilford. The students who are being impacted by that withholding are students who can least afford to have their education disrupted or impacted. Those dollars would have been, some of those dollars would have been spent on summer programming, summer schooling, and even summer feeding programs. New Haven, Hartford, and Waterbury are all losing $3 million that is being delayed or withheld that they don't have to spend on their students. Bridgeport is losing $3.8 million that is being withheld. It is estimated that it is 14% of the overall school budget in Connecticut that is being withheld this way. Guilford is not being impacted in the same way. The portion of dollars that we are losing in Guilford is going to be between $48,000 and $65,000 that we planned on that will be withheld from us. The Connecticut Finance Association, Finance Project projects that we're losing $48,000. Mrs. Trudeau, who's a little more conservative, suggests it could be as high as $65,000. That is either going to be delayed or withheld from us. Now, to put that in context, that's a teacher's salary. We just talked about an unfunded kindergarten teacher that we had to add. These dollars would have provided for that, but we don't know if we're going to receive those dollars. Now, we can make up a $65,000 shortfall. We will find a way to ensure that we provide for our teachers and for our students as we need to provide. But it's important to note that this happened. Then today, I learned about the lawsuit, so Connecticut and Attorney General Tong plans on fighting for those dollars to secure those for Connecticut school districts. We will simply continue to monitor and wait and see. I have been told, or I have been asked, and it has been suggested that the $65,000 that we are losing in Guilford is because of political activities or instructional decisions that this board and this administration have engaged in. I can tell you absolutely that that is unfounded. The dollars, the $65,000 is not being withheld from Guilford specifically or for any reason. This is a blanket hold. It's been applied to every school district in the country. So when somebody suggests that those dollars are being withheld from us because of decisions we've made, or books that we've purchased, or training that we have provided, or the words that we choose to use when we talk about our school system, those dollars are not being held from us because we choose to use words like diversity, or inclusion, or belonging, or justice, or equity. That is simply not the fact. The fact is they're being held globally from every school district until they are released, and we don't know if or when that will happen. The other news that we learned today is that the Supreme Court has greenlighted the firing of employees at the Department of Education federally. So I don't know if those dollars that are now being held, I don't know who's conducting the review that is, that is being suggested. And if employees start being fired from the Department of Education, I don't know when they intend to review to ensure that Bridgeport receives the $3.8 million that they are due, or when or if Guilford will receive the $65,000 that we are due. So it will not impact programming this year. It will not impact teacher training this year. It will not impact the way that we support our children or talk about the ways in which we support our children, and we will continue to monitor and keep you apprised.
But it is the case nationally that the monies are being withheld for review for exactly the reasons that you, that. See if in fact, school, school districts have been misusing money politically wrong.
That's the suggestion, but again.
I mean, they announced that, and that's what they announced.
That's the explanation. On the other hand, when we received the Dear Colleague letter earlier that reminded us that discrimination is illegal and egregious and that we should not engage in discrimination, the examples of prohibited behaviors that were listed were that we should not use race as a determining factor in our admissions policies. We don't have an admission policy. Or that we should not use race in our decisions related to financial aid. We don't give financial aid. Or in our hiring practices, and we don't. We simply do not. And so all of the prohibited, the Dear Colleague letter, and then the, the, the letter that demanded that all school districts attest that we are following the laws, they both said that we shouldn't, that we must not treat students different on the basis of their race. That's what we've been talking about since 2018, when we use words like diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, belonging, or even anti-racism. We have been talking about not treating children differently based on the nature, right, on the basis of their race, or their gender, or how they identify. And that's what we're being told not to do. So I'm confident that we are not doing the things that we have been threatened not to do and that our dollars should be released to us. I don't know if they will. I don't know if I will agree with the determinations on whether we are faithfully not doing the things that we are not to do. But when, when the Attorney General and the Commissioner of Education for Connecticut received that demand of attestation, they told individual school districts not to respond. They responded for the state as a whole and said, we are aware of our responsibilities. We are meeting our responsibilities. We are following all applicable state and federal law. And I, I firmly agree with that position.
All I'm saying is the federal government is making a decision that is globalized on a presumption, but the ramifications are local. So we could be as innocent as the snow, and we're going to get hurt because the screen that's being used or the ideology that's being used for the, for the federal determination is in fact impacting people. So there's a gross injustice, particularly, particularly for people, places like Bridgeport. I mean, it's just, it's just an abomination.
I'm not sure who's going to conduct the review of $6.8 billion when they're about to begin mass layoffs and firings. And so I, I'm really confused. I was prepared to share this report tonight, and I'm only more confused by the two pieces of news that I heard before coming to this meeting tonight. So we, again, we will continue to monitor, and I'll say what I've said before. I am fortunate to work, and our students are fortunate to attend schools in Guilford, which sits in Connecticut.
Tell us, what other federal, what other federal funding is Guilford getting besides the $65,000 we, we have used?
So in those grant funds, we receive a total of approximately a million dollars. The bulk of that is directed towards special education expenses. The small portion that has been identified for us in this withholding primarily would go towards teacher training. And there's, the large bulk goes towards special education supports. There's a teacher training, Title I, which is direct student support.
And as of right now, there's no, there's no discussions of withholding any of those funds?
No.
Just the $6.8 million. And again, right, all of it, the numbers dwindle that quickly because we receive relatively such a small share of the federal dollars that $6.8 billion nationally becomes $53.6 million in the state, and then $48,000 to $65,000 for us. So again, the loss or the harm will be disproportionately targeted at poorer, more rural, or specifically more urban communities in Connecticut. And that model will play out nationally as well. More affluent suburban communities receive less federal aid because they need less and therefore will be hurt less by this loss. We're insulated against it.
I also want to make it very clear, there is zero that this administration can do, nor this board can do to change the outcome of what's going on right now.
We are waiting to be informed if the dollars. We are waiting to be informed if the dollars are gone, or if they will simply be late, or if they will be partially released, or if we will be criticized or chastised in some way for them being, I, I honestly don't know. Again, and it's, it's only exacerbated by the decision about layoffs and firings today. Who is going to conduct an evaluation of 6.8 million, and who will be responsible to focus on the 48,000 for Guilford and how we spent, or spent that in the past, to tell us what, I mean, there simply isn't capacity to do it in the existing office, forget in one that's about to experience massive layoffs and firings. So I don't, I don't understand the, I received a notification from the Commissioner today that more information is to come. They're working as fast as they can to keep up with these decisions. No, there's nothing that we can do.
Oh, awesome. Accelerate.
There's nothing that we can do other than to, to speak up about the impact that this has, that, it is no way to run an organization to be told the day before you open for the season that your budget is being impacted. I mean, when, when, when locally at the state level, when we had a mid-year rescission because of a state financial crisis, we howled that we're already in the school year. How can you keep dollars that we built the school year around? We build one-year budgets, we only budget one year at a time. To be told the day before the fiscal year starts that you're having money taken out of that, even if it only represents one salary, it's no way to run an organization. It is not a responsible way to communicate about education dollars.
Dr. Freeman, thank you for calling it what it is, and you know, it's dangerous, it's harmful, it's ignorant, and it's cruel. And we will be able to handle this, but these big districts in our state will not. And there are programs right now that kids cannot participate in because of that. The most needed for our ever children. So to your point, we have to keep talking about this, and calling it what it is. And, you know, the dismantling of the Department of Education was a long-term plan, and sadly the Supreme Court has sided with the Trump administration on this. And to the question, who will review these, these are, there, there will not be anybody there to review it. And even though the Congress allotted these funds, they're, they're over, they're superseding that legal established understanding in many cases. This is just one example. And so, you know, I hope that things will go well, but, you know, I think districts have to be really prepared for finding other ways to accommodate these, not running these programs, which is really horrifying.
One of my responsibilities is to interpret and advise this board and this community about state and federal decisions that are made and how they will impact our community. I spoke to this board really frankly when No Child Left Behind was an issue, when common core state standards were rolled out. I have always told you what was positive and what was challenging about the decisions that were made and how they were impacting our school system. I just can't speak about this decision in any way other than, and, and the way I'm speaking to it tonight. And again, we're fortunate that the, the impact is actually so minimal here.
Is there any, is there any sense that there will be a prioritization of releasing of the funds based on the percentage taken from a particular district? Like, do we have any idea if Bridgeport will hear, yes, you're getting a portion of those funds ahead of Guilford, so that districts that are most impacted will receive word sooner than others?
I would hope, and, but that is only hope. I have no knowledge or information. And again, this, this, I mean, this wasn't a decision that was discussed with school. I, I was, I was not part of any conversation about this happening. I learned about it by reading it in the press. I mean, oftentimes, when decisions that affect school districts are made, either through federal organization, national organizations that I'm part of, or there will be questions, there will be opinions, there will be comment periods, there will at least be advanced notification. When I made the analogy to the mid-year rescission that was made here in Connecticut, all of those things happened. We were, we were warned, we were asked, there was discussion about how this would impact. I disagreed with it, but at least I had a sense that it was being discussed and it was coming. I learned about this as a Connecticut superintendent by reading the news story. No advance notice to the, the State Department of Education or, or professional organizations that I'm aware of. I, I do have one last item that's not on the agenda, but I'd like to touch on it if I may.
Okay.
So we informed this board and the community last week of some really good news for Dr. Mullen. That is not really good news for us in, in here in Guilford. So Dr. Mullen, the principal at Adams Middle School, informed us last week of an opportunity she has to move on and become an assistant superintendent in another Connecticut school district. While we're really happy for Dr. Mullen, that is going to be a challenge for us. I mentioned to this board in my communication to you, and I do want to repeat it, it marks a really unusual moment in time here in Guilford, not one that surprises me, but, but at this moment in Guilford, we have two sitting principals who are moving into assistant superintendent positions, and we're fortunate that one of those is wholly local. Mr. Hamel's moving from a principalship into our assistant superintendency, but two, our two middle school principals are leaving principalships to become assistant superintendents. This board has been notified of the resignation of two special education coordinators who are leaving Guilford. They're both leaving this year because they're becoming special education directors in neighboring school districts. I think it speaks really well to the strength of our team, to the skills that folks develop here in Guilford, and to the opportunities that are there for them in the future, but it's going to be challenging for us to fill those positions this year. Now, Mr. Buno has started at Baldwin, he began on July 1st, he's in every day, he's working, he's getting ready, but we now have a challenge to fill behind Dr. Mullen at Adams. I want this board and the community to be aware that the plan going forward is not to try to conduct a complete search from now to the opening of school. We are working to find an appropriate interim principal who will take on the reins of the school, and we will conduct a search while we have an interim in place. This board knows that we've had really good luck with interims in the past with Mr. Gohler, with Mr. Regan, with Dr. Johnson, who came back, and we've had really good interims who give us the time that we need so that we can then slow down and make good decisions moving forward. There's some complications around the time, we're not sure right now whether that interim position will be a half year with a search to place a principal in January 1st, or whether we may engage a full year of an interim with a search that would then place a new principal at Adams on July 1st. We're going to work out those details, we're meeting with people, we're talking to people now, we will keep this board informed, we'll keep the community informed, we won't wait for a board meeting. When we know that we have an interim in place, we will get that information out to the Adams community as quickly as possible. Again, it's important to note, interims are selected quickly, we won't be doing a full search, we just simply don't have the time to do that. There will be a full search during the upcoming school year to find our next permanent and long-term principal for Adams Middle School.
Do you have any questions or thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
Is it possible to leverage your previous search for the same position?
Yes, and we are. Yep, and so we're, we're looking back to folks that we've had previous relationships with, and we're looking at folks who are in the search for the Baldwin. And again, there's some complications with Connecticut retirement procedures that complicate who the pool might include, so we're working through those, and yes, and thank you.
Other questions?
Well, it will certainly be sad to see, to see Erin Mullen go, but congratulations to her on a exciting new position.
Yeah, very exciting for her. And that concludes my rather energetic report.
All right, so we're going to move on to the board agenda. We have a number of things to go through this evening. The first is a very long list, exciting of new appointments. So 9.1 is a person. We are being asked to ratify the appointment of the following 12 teachers. Alicia Becker, Guilford High School, Italian World Language and Special Education, so 0.6 FTE, full-time equivalent as an Italian World Language teacher, and 0.4 FTE as a special education teacher.
Can I ask a question? Is this the additional Italian teacher that's been so requested?
This is a unicorn.
I knew this was going to be a question, and I knew we weren't going to be able to wait until we, no, don't apologize.
This is an addition to the 1.0 Italian FTE that we currently have at the high school, expanding that department to 1.6, and the opportunity to find somebody certified in Italian and cross-endorsed in special ed, so that we have the opportunity to make a full-time position out of this.
It's really quite unbelievable, actually.
Yeah, karma's really good.
No, I'm, I'm glad you asked, because Jen, you were not the only one who was wondering about that, right? Okay, so, first teacher, Alicia Becker. Second, Haley Clark, Leet Elementary, Special Education teacher, one-year position to cover leave of absence. Emily Cowles, Lakes Elementary School, grade four teacher. Samantha Franz, Leet Elementary School, kindergarten teacher. Isaac Freeman, Lakes Elementary School, grade two teacher. Nicole Green, Lakes Elementary, grade one teacher. Melanie Healy, Lakes Elementary School, Special Education pre-K teacher. Bailey Meglin, Leet Elementary School, grade two teacher. Madeline Meyer, Cox Elementary School, grade two teacher. Alessandra Minnekeen, Jones, Jones Elementary School, Special Education teacher. Maureen Quail, Cox Elementary School, grade three teacher. And Amanda Tier, Leet Elementary School, Special Education pre-K teacher. So again, we're being asked to ratify the appointment of these 12 teachers. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. All right, that's unanimous. We are being asked to ratify the resignation of the following two teachers. Philip Day from Adams Middle School, Language Arts, 14 years of experience. And Jamie Fernicola, Leet Elementary School, School Psychologist, 10 years of experience. Is there a motion to ratify the resignation of these two teachers?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's everyone, and appreciation for those years of service to those two teachers. We're being asked to ratify, for the purpose of retirement, the following teacher, Laura Cattanio, Baldwin Middle School, grade six math teacher, 28 years of experience. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, and again, a thank you to Lori Cattanio for 28 years of, of experience in service to Guilford Public Schools. And then finally, please, we're being asked to ratify the resignation of the following administrator, Heather Gieske, Special Education Coordinator, 20 years of experience. Is there a motion to approve the resignation of this administrator?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous as well, and a, and a thank you to Heather, for sure. All right, lots of hiring going on. Lots of hiring. 9.2 is to act on the acceptance of registration for three kindergarten students under the age of five requesting enrollment in the 25, 26 school year. We have done this a number of times. Again, this speaks to Public Act Number 2328, 208, which became effective July 1st, 2023, which set a date for student enrollment in, in school at age five, but allowed districts to consider and assess children who might be slightly younger for admittance to kindergarten. We're being asked to approve three additional students who would be going to Leet who fall into this category. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're going to, it is, it is three.
It is three. No, thank you very much. All right. So I think that was unanimous. Do I have everything? Perfect. All right, 9.3 is to recede, this is a receive item, the Educator Growth Plan. Dr. Freeman, do you want to speak to that at all before we?
Only to turn it over to Dr. Goff and to point out.
I'm sorry.
But, but again, as I do turn it over, to point out once again, this was a new plan that went in place with teachers this year. This was, it was a plan that was pulled together by a team of educators across Guilford. Dr. Goff led the work of that team on this plan. The team has, the plan has received, has been received incredibly well by principals and by teachers. These are revisions that we're putting in place because again, Doctor's work, Dr. Goff's work monitoring the plan, meeting with focus groups, getting feedback after the first year of launch, and we have been asked, and Dr. Goff has been asked, to share this plan with the state, and so she will be joining the state.
September 30th.
September 30th, to share our plan with other school districts as they would really like to see more districts move in the same direction that Guilford has moved with this plan. So Dr. Goff is going to share those revisions with you, and I just want to thank her and her team once again for the work that they put into this plan.
Members of the team here in the room, it was wonderful. I'm going to be very quick because I know we have looked at this plan a lot of times. So I did just want to share with you, we did a survey of the teachers, any certified staff members received the survey, 176 responded, which is actually about a 50% response rate, which is huge, especially given that we sent out the survey in May. So that was, that was impressive. Teachers said that they are continuously improving their instructional practice specifically because of this plan. They have been encouraged to try new instructional strategies specifically because of this plan, and they feel that their instructional practice is better now than it was in the past. And we, we can't prove this, but we did ask them, do they think that their students were learning better because of the, of the work that they were doing? And they did feel largely that their students did benefit from the teachers' learning. I thought that this was an interesting bit of information because we know that when teachers talk to each other about instruction, their instruction gets better. So if you see that in 23, 24, about 54% were talking to others about their instruction. This past year, 80% reported regularly having those conversations. And additionally, when teachers see each other teach, particularly expert teachers are observed in their teaching practice, that also improves the practice of those who've gone in to observe, and actually, believe it or not, the teacher who's teaching. So in the past, that was about 16% of folks were doing that regularly. This past year, it was about 76% of folks. So those are pretty big jumps.
How is observation facilitated? Is that kind of on a, are we mandating it, or are we?
It's part of the plan now.
Yes, we are mandating it, and actually, that's one of the things that we clarified in this year's plan, but we, the way that it gets done in each instance is so particular to the individual situations. But peer observations were one of the things that we discovered wasn't super clear in the plan, so this year, we did clarify, everybody will do at least three observations of others' professional practice, and they must be open to hosting if asked up to three observations. That was actually simply a mathematical issue, we couldn't have people do three observations if people weren't willing to accept others. Many people said, in fact, we had a joke on the committee, there's one teacher who gets asked to, to be observed a lot. We thought that they should just all go to her classroom, that would save the trouble, but many people host many more than three, which means that others who are less excited to do it maybe don't get asked as often, but everybody will be obligated to offer three slots this year. And we also heard that, that people don't love the forms. It was not a horrendous response rate, but that was the sort of the, the thing that stood out in the survey is that people did not love the forms. I'm not sure that anybody's ever going to love their evaluation forms, so we were hugely worried about that, but we thought if we can make them better, let's give that a try. So we visually streamlined them, making text boxes actually visibly different than the other writing on the page, that people would know where to put their responses. We removed compound questions, so instead of saying, you know, what are you working on improving, and how do you know that that needs to be improved? Those are now two separate questions. And then we really focused our attention on making sure that the strategies that people are trying are based on evidence and research-based strategies. So it's not just any strategy, there needs to be some, some evidence that this is a strategy that will work with a student. There needs to be some evidence that this is a strategy that will work with the students in the situation that they're in. That's it, those are all the changes. Really, the only actual change is to clarify the number of observations. But other than that, that's it. The state did approve this plan pending your approval here tonight. So they were happy with it, and they were happy enough to give us a call and ask us to share it with others in September, so.
Can I clarify, we're being asked to approve the revisions? Because I feel like we already.
I believe the expectation is that you will approve the plan annually.
Oh, okay. Because this is not, right, as you've noted, we, right, okay, that makes sense.
So it's here tonight as a receive only. We could certainly wait until August to approve it, and that is more than enough time for it to be in place for us to use in September when teachers return.
Presumably, all of this is a way to increase student learning. The whole improving teaching has got the goal.
That's the point.
And there's not a part of a plan that says how we're assessing the pre and post. That is, how much more evaluated learning are we getting because of this plan over time? How would we know that?
I don't think we would see it obviously in our standardized test scores, certainly not immediately. There's just not going to be.
I don't expect that's where it would be. I mean, it wouldn't capture the, in some sense, the beauty of what's really going on in classrooms. So I'm asking whether we're doing it now or not, how do we capture the gains so that we know that this is really becoming causal as opposed to accidental?
Right, well, so that is actually baked into the plan, because these are research-based cycles. Plan Do, Study, Act Cycles. That Action/Research Cycle asks each teacher to evaluate how well the intervention that they tried worked. And in many cases, that's specifically using student outcomes. So it's very small grain size, but for instance, if I want to make sure that I am including all children in conversations and discussions, in classroom discussions regularly, I then have to provide some evidence that I've made a change there and of the impact on student learning.
I just hear you asking, how do we aggregate that together and share back to the community that this plan is helping our teachers to be more skillful, and therefore, helping our students to perform to higher levels? And we need to keep working that through. I think there will be delayed results that we may tease out, but there's usually a three to four year gap, like lag, before you begin to see.
There are two groups that really, aside from the Board of Education being, is, we clearly would want the community to know that the investment of this time, energy, we're doing something right. And secondly, we want the teachers to know. That is, is their behavior changing in a way that in fact is rewarding for them? For example, if we agreed that, as we have in the past, that things like math and reading instruction, we wanted to really emphasize, would we see over X number of years, gains, probably because our teachers have gotten better in those ways using these techniques? And to the degree that we can capture that formatively would be important.
And that's part of why we're looking at process indicators here. We're looking at the number of times that teachers are in each other's classrooms. We're looking at how often they're speaking about instruction with others. And we're regularly conducting focus groups, surveys. We're gathering this information from teachers about what they're learning. And then principals are sitting with teachers three times a year and looking at these study cycles that the teachers are engaging in to see, is this having an impact that is positive for the teacher learning and the kid learning?
The summative measures are going to be really difficult to see when you're already in the top 10%, when you're in the top quart, when you're in the top decile of this state performance, how much is this going to move those overall measures? I think we will see something, but it's going to be really small and really incremental, and it's going to take time to see in those measures. I'm not sure how to collect and articulate the kinds of gains that you're talking about.
I agree that the state standardized tests are just not fine-grained enough, much less, I think, quality enough, but that's a different issue. The thing I'm concerned with is, if I'm a high school soul studies or English teacher, and I'm concerned about really getting as many as students possible to really engage in critical thinking. And I know over the last few years that 30, 40% of my students are not at the level that I would like them to be. And I know that from the kind of writing and testing I do in my classroom.
Right.
Forget the standardized tests. And I said, I would like to use these new things we're doing to see if I can make a difference. Since I'm in charge of the evaluations, the assessments, I have the data. It would be really wonderful if, in fact, teachers were gathering that kind of data and could say, here are the goals I had at this level of learning, and I think I made a difference, and here's the evidence for it.
That's exactly.
And they are the best judges of whether or not there's a difference. But we would ask them, what's the evidence? We'd love to see if, in fact, the kind of assignments you're giving are actually the kind that we would want them to get.
Yes, that is precisely, and that's part of why we talked about the evidence. We ask them to bring the evidence that shows that what they're doing is working for the students in the classes.
I guess what I'm hearing is, how do we take that from a conversation between the teacher and her principal, and aggregate it together and make it public? And so I think that's, and that's where I've said, we have some work to do. We are not, the measures are so different from subject to subject, grade level to grade level, that again, it's going to be difficult to put on a slide to share at a Board of Finance meeting.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, and I'm not worried about the Board of Finance, learning about. I'm much more concerned that we, as a board, are as well informed as we can be about the kinds of outcomes. For example, all the data in the last five, six years says kids are leaving high schools across the country grossly underprepared for college, by which they mean writing ability, critical thinking ability, studying ability to stay on task, a lot of things that our teachers know about. And how are we doing with regard to the kind of things that we really espouse and can report on? And to the degree that we are doing well, I would love to make public, okay? To the degree to which we find that individual people need help, that's an in-service issue. My guess is we're doing a lot better than we're reporting. And it would be wise for us as a system to sort of see where we are and where we are five years from now because of what we're doing on purpose.
Yes, and actually, that's really interesting, because what you're talking about is a system that we talked about at the Curriculum Institute.
Right.
Which is really focusing on cornerstone assessments that evaluate the portrait of a graduate.
Exactly.
Skills and have a system of that all the way along.
Exactly.
We spoke about it at Curriculum Institute, but also at our last workshop.
That's right.
Yes, we've had this conversation a few times in the last few weeks.
Well, it's very exciting. I, when we first saw this Educator Growth Plan, it was something that really looked like it was going to be a different approach and a different tool in a very positive way. Terrific that you're taking the time to revise it and listening to our teachers and what they need, and really commendable that you're being asked to present at the state level. So, and the bonus is, we get it right here in real time, so.
We'll be back to ask for your approval next month.
Yeah, terrific. Thank you, thank you.
Quick question.
Yes, please.
On a next comment. What sort of follow-up do we do with graduates, like immediately after graduation? Do we do any, or four years out, or something like that, just to measure, how are you doing? How did you fare? How did we do?
No, we're not following them. There's been talk at the state level about tracking students. The state has a real interest in trying to see about, you know, we track as far as college placement, right? And we know what the college placements are. The state has a real interest in looking to extend that and track through how many students complete two years, how many complete four years, how many receive a degree, what the student experience is. Ours is, you know, the feedback that we receive is anecdotal and, right? Students come back and talk to us, but we don't have a systematized way where we track students post-graduation, where we try to stay in touch with them and collect that data.
If we had a full-time data analyst here, we could be.
But my point, right, backing into it from the state, the state doesn't do that. The state doesn't require it. I don't know of any schools, apart from some private schools, apart from some private schools, who I know who track it. I don't know of any public systems, but it would be a great thing to get out in front of and be the first district to start doing.
Well, we should know.
College is not for everybody. And the more that we're going through society, I would actually push some of my kids to do other things in more trade schools. My nephew is doing that right now, and he's amazing. Just another work he did at my house, if it was necessary. But I find that really hard that the state's only tracking kids that go to post-secondary. I hope there's more.
No, no, and I apologize, the state's not tracking students at all post-graduation. And I limited, I limited my example to college, but we should be, we should be looking. Yes, we should be looking across the board. Who goes to a two-year school, a four-year school, a vocational program, a certificate training program, military, right? We should be looking at, right? And what is, who's staying in whatever program or placement they go into? Who's sticking and completing? And what is their response? Do they feel prepared for and capable of any of the choices that they made? So, no, I limited it to only talking about college, and I apologize for that. The state's not tracking any of it, nor are we. We shake their hand on the green, and we don't follow them afterwards. The only connection that we have is anecdotal, coincidental, and it's often because we've got younger siblings that we're hearing the stories that are coming back to us.
It's also a privacy matter, right? You'd have to have them agree to participate, yeah.
But we could try to do focus groups. We could, right, we could even try to do invitational in things to do something, to look at quality of life and satisfaction post-Gilford graduation. I started there because I wanted to point out that we're not the only ones who aren't doing it, which doesn't mean we can't be the first to do something.
It's a lot easier now than it used to be.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. I was just saying, tie it into the reunions, right? I remember my five-year, I was so excited to go back to my five-year. Lost its luster after that.
There's got to be social media opportunities to collect that information without having to invite people back buying pizza and have an in-person focus group, right? There's got to be ways that we could set up a Facebook account and invite graduates of these years to fill out a form, to fill out a survey and give us that kind of information.
All right, 9.4. The next few items, we're going to be acting on curriculum that were both presented at our last meeting, but also presented by some of our faculty that helped create them. So 9.4 is to act on the Personal Finance Curriculum. We all received the full curriculum in our packet. So I am going to ask for a motion to approve the Personal Finance Curriculum.
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments or discussion about that?
The presentation from the teachers was amazing.
Was really. Next.
All three.
And we had, not because someone knew this was on our agenda, but in my household, a couple days ago, had a discussion about this and what people in my household wish that they had been, had this in their high school. So this is.
But if you look at the curriculum, if you look at it, it is really well done.
Oh, it's really well done.
The parents in this community should look at that, and they would feel very good that their kids are getting that kind of stuff. The fact that the state mandated it turns out to be, I think, a very good thing. But our particular curriculum, is it very sophisticated?
Yeah.
It's not, I mean, it's not rudimentary. This is very sophisticated stuff.
It's really well done.
Yes, terrific.
You can pay $1,000 at age 65 and go to a seminar and try to get the same thing.
So terrific, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Personal Finance Curriculum? Please say aye. That's unanimous, thank you. 9.5 is to act on the Health I and Health II curriculums. Is there a motion to approve these curriculums?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or questions about these? We also received these in detail and also had a presentation on this.
Not to be outdone, but these are also great.
Yes.
I mean, the work that the teachers did on all of these is just.
It's a real spectacle.
Not perfunctory.
No.
Not perfunctory at all, as they often are all over the country. These are good.
Yeah.
And I might point out that one of our coaches led that curriculum work, so. Another thing that instructional coaches do.
Right, thank you for pointing that out, that's important. Terrific, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Health I and Health II curriculums?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. 9.6 is to act on the PE, Physical Education, I and PE II curriculums. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions of these? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is also unanimous, terrific. All right, 9.7 is to receive, and the next couple of items are related to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. 9.7 is to receive for possible action, awarding the bid for custodial supplies. As has been the process for a number of years, the bid for custodial supplies goes out around the number of items needed, in this case, 63 items that are used by the maintenance staff here at Guilford Public Schools. There were nine vendors that submitted bids for some or all of the 63 items listed, and we here have a list of those nine. We have been asked to vote to approve the process by which these 63 items will be bid and to the lowest bidder. So some of these vendors bid on one or two items, some of them bid on many more, and our administration will go through, identify the lowest bidder, and then award the item, one of 63, to that bidder. We are simply being asked to approve that process, which then allows our staff to get these items at the lowest bid. So I am asking for a motion to approve the process by which these nine vendors are assessed for providing custodial supplies to Guilford Public Schools by awarding to the lowest bidder per item.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that is everybody, thank you. 9.7, sorry, 9.8 is to receive for possible action, a resolution on the capital equipment lease. So every year, we take action on a capital lease. We, as a Board of Education, and, sorry, the lease purchase is one that supports our technology every year. Occasionally, it also supports something else. I think in the last couple of years, it supported the purchase of a truck that.
Well, this year as well, correct.
But it has traditionally been the manner in which we have been able to fund the technology here at Guilford Public Schools, which includes the laptops that our students use, that our teachers use, et cetera. The first step is a resolution to authorize a lease purchase agreement. We, as a Board of Ed, need to first have the Board of Selectmen authorize the ability to agree to this lease. They have done so at a prior meeting, and so they are now awaiting our vote to, again, approve the resolution on a capital equipment lease. So I'm going to ask for a motion for that resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or concerns? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just going to abstain.
Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Brook abstains. All right, the next step is a request to waive the bid requirement for the capital lease. For at least a couple of years, Guilford Public Schools and our administration have found that there are only a couple of vendors who are willing to engage in a lease with us that is this relatively small. They are looking typically for something that might be a million or more, and we are frequently looking in the $500,000 range. frequently looking in the $500,000 range in order to pursue this capital lease. In this case, and this year, there were bids, proposals received from Cogent Leasing and Financing and Huntington National Bank. Typically, we are expecting at least three vendors or three bids to come in. So we are next being asked to waive the typical bidding process that would require the three vendors or banks at least, because that opportunity literally doesn't exist. Mrs. Trudeau, have I missed anything in that explanation? All right, thank you for checking. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the wa-, waiving of the bidding process for awarding the, the capital lease.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments about this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? No? Okay, so that's unanimous. Lastly, we are being asked, asked, asked to act on, somehow I'm tripping over my tongue this evening, on the actual awarding of the capital lease. So we do, as I mentioned, have two vendors that bid on this. The lower is the Cogent Leasing and Financing, which would be an annual 3.94% with annual payments upfront in the magnitude of $107,000. Mrs. Trudeau, I'm gonna turn to you and see if there's anything in particular you wanted to make sure got mentioned as we consider this.
The only thing that I'll add is that that amount is actually less than the amount that was budgeted for this payment. So we're, it's, it's within, definitely within our budget.
Thank you. That's really important, important. And did I give the idea the right rate? So $107,874.08.
Correct.
Okay, with payments in advance.
There was an error in my memory. I apologize for that. I had the wrong time.
Okay, no apologies. Thank you too much. All right, so we're being asked then to approve the awarding of the bid now that both vendors have been assessed and their proposals have been assessed to Cogent Leasing and Financing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second, any questions, comments, discussion? All right. Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions? None. Okay, so that is unanimous as well. Thank you. All right. 9.11 is to act on a recommendation of the Policy Committee. I'm gonna turn it to you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a new policy. The Board received this last month and has had the last month to review. This is for a non-lapsing education account. The state has now recommended that we keep a non-lapsing education account. I'm gonna actually read the policy. It's not very long, and since it's a brand-new policy, I think it would be good to, to read that for the public. Non-lapsing education account. The superintendent may request the Board of Education to approve a transfer into a non-lapsing account. The account will be a town-designated fund balance named Fund for Education Expenditures. The transfer may be of some portion of any unexpended funds from the Board's prior fiscal year general operating budget, provided such transfer amount does not exceed 2% of the total budget appropriation for the education for such prior fiscal year. Any expenditure from the fund from educational expenditures will be authorized solely by the Board of Education. Expenditures from the fund shall be made only for educational purposes, generally on one-time, non-recurring expenditures, such as capital expenditures, extraordinary expenditures, or, or emergency expenditures, which may be necessary but not otherwise budgeted. Upon approval from the Board, a transfer request will be submitted to the town to allocate the amount to the Guilford Public Schools Business Office. The Business Office will report any transfers made from the fund at their next regularly-scheduled meeting. Any unexpended funds, which may remain at the close of each fiscal year in the Fund for Educational Expenditure Account, shall be non-lapsing and remain within the account for use by the Board of Education. The Board shall create the Fund for Educational Expenditures and be responsible for the accounting of the funds in accordance with the governmental accounting standards and generally accepted principles. The fund shall be subject to an annual audit as required by state statute. The Board shall review the fund on an annual basis. So, so the gist of it is that we can take up to 2% of our total budget that we didn't spend. So at the end of the year, if we happen to be lucky enough to have anything left, historically we have just returned that to the town. This would allow us to keep up to 2% of that small amount of money, it's, it's never very sizable, in an account. That account can build and it can be used for any expenditures that we haven't budgeted, like a broken pipe, like something that's a little catastrophic. This isn't supposed to be something that will cover a teacher's salary. It's supposed to be a non-budgeted item, really to be thought of as a rainy day fund. It's not something that should be taken back from us and used for general business purposes. So we didn't really have much of a conversation as a Board about this last time, so I'd like to see what everyone's thoughts are on it. We did discuss it at our policy meeting two months ago. So now that we have the full Board together, does anyone have questions or comments about this policy?
I presume that a legitimate educational expenditure would be adding a teacher for this year in the way that we've done.
Yeah.
Because that money would not be budgeted for an ongoing salary. It would be done for this year. And so that, it's a wonderful example of why a fund like that would serve good purpose for us.
Sounds like, sounds like there might be some.
So, yeah.
I'm gonna comment that I think it's a, this is for non-recurring.
Yeah, non-recurring. You can, you can, you can hire a teacher for one year.
So we would have to absorb it into the budget.
And then we have to budget for next year because we know in advance.
Right.
It gives you, it gives you a leeway, so that if we had to hire two or three teachers this year and we had a reserve in there, we could be done without taking it from somebody else's budget. Some people aren't getting hurt by the, because it's an emergency.
I think the beauty of it is that that decision needs to be made by the Board. I could see situations where I might come to you and argue in front of this Board that we had budgeted for 11 kindergarten teachers, we're now at 12, we need it for this year, and then next year, with first grade numbers being different than kindergarten numbers, it doesn't have to be a continuing or recurring expense. If you saw where you could turn the 12 back into 11, or even go so far as to say by building it into the budget next year, it wouldn't continue to. So I could see that, and each sitting Board would be able to make that decision and decide whether it fits into the description or not. I would argue that the $65,000 that we may lose in grant funding, it'd be something that this fund could easily fill in while we await a determination on whether those grants are gone forever. And the training is annual training, so that clearly is non-recurring. But I think the beauty of it is that we would make recommendations, and it would be for the sitting Board at that moment to determine whether they were going to release it for that purpose or not.
I think the, the example that I've used in a number of conversations I've had with colleagues at our other boards in town is, is that we frequently have our tuition line, which our administration has really successfully, over the years, been able to predict a little better with, with a lot of data points that they look at very closely, but continues to be a line that, that cannot be fully predicted in, in a, in a manner, simply because we don't know what, what our children's needs are gonna be in any given year, or whether new students might come into the district who have needs that we need to support. We have had many years in my tenure on the, on the Board where our tuition line was, was over by, by quite a, quite a bit. And while in my tenure, we have never had to go to the Board of Finance mid-year or before the end of the year to ask for more money in order to make sure we meet our, our final budget numbers. We have had years where we've had to freeze funds for a while in, in a prediction of knowing that our, our tuition line was gonna go up. So that's another example that I've used quite a bit, right? It's non-recurring, it's, but, but in, in, in a year where we have more student need than we have budgeted for, it could provide support for that.
I would also assume that the volatility around healthcare, you know, when we see medical expenses spiking as much as they are right now, this would be another area where we'd be able to turn to that funding.
So I'm gonna suggest that, I don't think we can use it for healthcare.
Yeah.
It has to be educational.
It has to be educational. Or for a capital expenditure, so I would think that would, yeah. Good buy. Yeah. I think it's really timely, given what we were talking about just earlier, or what's happening around education on the federal level, that we have something to kind of supplant if some of the grants aren't continued and other things, that we can have some opportunities. Because grants are typically one-time, so, you know, also could supplement some of the that we rely on right now.
You know, so.
What is 2% of our budget?
Our annual budget.
Approximately 1.4 million where we sit now, 1.5 million where we sit now.
Yeah, and I will, I will note that, you know, we've had years, Mrs. Trudeau can be exact, I don't, I don't think it's necessary for this comment, but we've had years in the past several where we've ended the year with less than $100,000 extra dollars.
We had years where we were $8,000.
And, and we've had, we've had years where we have had a couple of $100,000, but this is, you know, this is something that is not going to grow very, very large.
I don't ever, I don't ever anticipate seeing 2%. In, in my tenure in Guilford, the biggest return ever was in the year that we closed schools in March. We physically had to close schools in March, and in that school year, we returned approximately $325,000. And that was the biggest return in my time in Guilford. Six figures is an unusual number to hit. We budget, and again, right, the, the process we went through this year, from the budget that the principals brought to, to us, that we brought forward to you, that you brought to the Board of Finance, and that the Board of the Finance then moved on to the voters, was reduced by over $2 million. So while there is a 2% ceiling, I don't anticipate us ever getting close to that ceiling.
Well, and, and as part of this policy that's being put in front of us to consider, part of our jobs every year is gonna be.
Is to determine how much to hold on to.
It's gonna be determine that and to, and to monitor, to monitor this carefully, so.
Annually, this Board could choose to return it all to the town.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's right.
I just gotta leave. I just have a comment. I actually voted no on this out of policy. I still believe the things I believe, why I voted no. And I just wanna, if I could just express those, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, or I believe, I believe 100% with this, but the, there are certain members of our community, and it's a large amount of the community, that does believe there is some lack of transparency in the Board of Ed budget. That we always seem to find the money, and we always seem to have money to give back, and that they believe that the Board of Ed budget is padded pretty well to be able to do those things. Now, I understand we don't give back a lot of money. I agree with you there, and I'm not saying that I believe in these things, but at the same time, to me, doing a, a, a fund like this just feeds into that in terms of the community. I know that, again, we've returned very little. I don't like the idea of, of this sort of a fund, because if we have a need, if we go, if we had to go to the town, I know we're very proud that we haven't gone to the town Board of Finance, but if we had to, we could and they would.
Correct.
So we already have that stopgap measure. So I think something like this is just inviting more opportunity for people and for the community to be upset with a budget that's already the majority of our budget, where they're claiming it's too big, which it did fail last year in, in those ideas, I think just adds to that and adds fuel to that fire. So I, I just don't like it.
So I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna, I wanna continue discussion, but we're now getting into kind of personal thoughts. So I am gonna ask for a motion and a second, and then continued discussion on the actual. So I'm, I'm gonna put it in the positive or simply ask for someone if there is a motion to act on the recommendation of the Policy Committee for enacting this policy 3316, non-lapsing account? Is there someone who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I, I now wanna invite, you know, other conversation, if, if people have continued conversation about this.
I don't wholeheartedly disagree with what you're saying, but at least voting on this, approving this gives us a mechanism to be able to make that decision. Not allowing it does not give us that opportunity.
I, I just, one of the things I would have liked to have seen in this, and we did discuss this in policy, is a cap. I think it should have been capped at $500,000 at the, at a top end, right? We're gonna have those years, like you said, where there's gonna be some more money. I believe it was Branford, who just put $2 or $3 million this school year into this sort of an account. That's outrageous, in my book. Like, I just, I don't wanna ever see that happen here. So I just think there, there needs to be more safety rails or safeguards on this sort of a thing with a little bit more, again, transparency. I know that's used a lot.
No, you're right.
But I, I, that's what makes me uncomfortable about this, is, right, we have you, Dr. Freeman, we know what your intention is, right? Eventually, it's a point you have to leave. I'm not saying now.
Could we, could we get through the next item first, please?
At least, I hope you're not leaving. But, you know, you could see that getting abused, and you could see this going, and I know it's all up to the Board, but when we're talking about the optics, and we're talking about a community, and we're talking about, this is the town's money that they've given to us to do these things with, I, I just don't know that it's the best move on the, on the.
Can I counterpoint that?
Yeah.
And the intention, I think, behind this on a state level was, we have a very wonderful relationship with our town leadership and our other boards, and there are a lot of communities where that is not the case, and where funds that could really be used for something impactful in education get usurped for something else. And so I think this protects a lot of communities around that, giving them, like as John said, a mechanism. And I think it's like anything, it's like setting up a savings account. You might not use it, but we might be in a position in the future where we think it's really prudent to do it. And I'm just, I adore you and you're my colleague, but I, I would argue against the lack of transparency. Our entire budget is published with a community to vet and look through every line and to come to community meetings and ask questions. So I don't get that perception from, but again, you may be talking to other folks, and that's legitimate, but I think we're gonna continue to be as transparent as possible. We're, Kristen just read the whole thing to the community, and hopefully, if folks have questions in the future, great. We may never use it. Or as I joke with John, we may put $160 in that account one year, you know, like, we don't know. But I, I wanna validate what you said, but I also just wanna say that, having served in this board for almost eight years, I, I don't think we're not transparent about our budgets. I think Linda has the foresight every year to kind of, I don't know what your crystal ball is, but you've been amazing around this, and Dr. Freeman, to really predict well. And when we've had to cover other things, to be able to shift, say tuition were low, we're able to shift it to capital improvements that ran over, like, that's responsible budgeting. And I just, I just wanted to say that. And I, I understand your misgivings on this, but I think the state's intention, and I know it was, was to really empower some education systems to not have that rug pulled out from under them, and to give them a little flexibility with their funds, that they have on their budget line for important educational purposes, so that's all.
For clarity, does this, it necessitates a Board vote to place monies into the account?
Yeah.
And then it necessitates a Board vote to use expenditures?
Exactly, right.
There is an opportunity for a lot of transparency, a lot of discussion at that.
On top of that, the Board and the administration know this budget because of nine months of working every year, line by line. Nobody else in town does. The Board of Finance, by law, cannot reduce this budget, recommend reduction by line item, only by a general amount, properly, because in fact, they have no context for understanding what these lines mean. Seems to me that one wants to always keep the people who have the authority over the schools, which is the Board of the Administration, as close to the budget as possible. as close to the budget as possible. And it's important for us to know, we do this every year, we have to face decisions, and we know we're up against not having enough money. To know that we've got another account because it's been sitting here for two or three years, beginning to build, is an important part of our ability to build a budget for the following year without having to go and ask permission from somebody else who knows much less about this budget. So I think that the state is right and awfully right about coming around, putting responsibility for the budget where it really belongs.
Except that when we do the budget next year, and we've got $500,000 sitting there, the first thing the community is going to say is, no, we're voting this down, you've got $500,000 right there. You've changed your budget with that. I mean, it's just, you got to know that's going to be a reality. We're going to be up against it every year.
They can ask that without this. They can ask it anytime they want. The fact of the matter is, we should be able to say, this is what it's being used for. This is the emergency. This is what we're trying to do. This is what we didn't fund last year. We have answers for all those things. And I think they should hold us responsible for that. So I don't think they should be sitting there having to say, they don't know what the Board of Finance is talking about when they come to our budget. They have no idea what's in their heads of anybody else. We are the people legally responsible for the budget. And if we have the good fortune of having a surplus one year or two years or three years, great. It means that we can think about the upcoming budget differently than if we didn't have that. Because if it's someplace else, it's just not real to us at that point. And so I'm happy to take responsibility for this as a board member as opposed to letting some of the boards in town give us permission.
And I also think emergencies happen, like the broken pipe at Adams, whenever that was, six months ago. And that would have been handy to have some money sitting around somewhere.
Yeah.
Because I think the town has to understand that every unplanned contingency, money has to come from somewhere. And this would provide the opportunity for that.
And we know that we've been very cautious and careful with the budget and have a very limited unexpendited fund at the end of each year. And given this policy, we have the choice to transfer only a certain amount of that money into this emergency fund. So we wouldn't necessarily have to go to the $500,000 mark.
And suppose you get a hostile Board of Finance in the future?
Yes. We don't know.
Politically.
Right. Right, we don't know. But we can choose how much we would put in this fund. So we also can be responsible along the way about how much we feel comfortable with in the emergency fund.
And I suppose the budget that we have is approved by the town. So if we have a budget of $74 million, the town has voted in favor of that being earmarked specifically for education. So if we wind up spending $73.8 million of that, it would make sense that the other $200,000 should stay with education since that's what the town would have asked for it to be earmarked for. Okay, because I, like Jen, have some hesitations about this, and this conversation's been helpful.
I also, and we've heard it from a couple other comments, we have control over how we proceed with this, right?
Which gives us the opportunity.
And we can look at this again next year or in two years and say, how is this going? Do we like how this is going? Do we want to add something to this policy that puts further parameters around this? I think that's the thing that I like, too, is it really does give us the opportunity. It requires, as it should, that we are monitoring this every year. It requires, Mr. Schfred, as you said, that we vote on things that go in and come out, right? There's nothing automatic about any of this. And then lastly, it gives us the opportunity, again, in a year or two, to say, how's this going? Is there something we want to change about this? Any other comments before I call a vote? All right, so I have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor of creating, per this policy 3316, a non-lapsing education account.
Aye.
Aye for those. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One opposed. And I don't think there are any abstentions, but I'm going to check. No, all right. Wonderful, thank you. Great, great discussion.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge again, this is why I like working with this board so much. I mean, this is the work of a Board of Education. I appreciate every opinion that was just shared here. This, from early on and some of the items that I had to report out to you to the way that we make decisions, this is why I appreciate working with this board.
Thank you.
I think it was timed on purpose. I was in my 12.
So our next item. Our next item. We have received for possible action, but I believe we are indeed ready to act on, both the extension of the superintendent's contract and the compensation for the 2025-26 year. So the Board of Education has met in executive session, as appropriate, with Dr. Freeman to discuss performance over the last year. We then met without Dr. Freeman in executive session to continue those conversations and then engaged in a negotiation to land on our decisions, mutual decision around compensation or mutual negotiations around compensation for the 25-26 school year. The contract that we will be voting on tonight identifies the compensation for the 25-26 school year as such, that there will be a 3.25% increase to the superintendent's salary, which will also be applied to the TSA. And there will be a $3,500 contribution added to the TRB. Getting to the right page. The TRB system benefit. Those are the two, two things related to compensation that represent increases to the superintendent's contract this year. The only other change to the contract is to remove language that is no longer necessary under Fringe Benefits 7D, which had an allowance for unused vacation days, provided the superintendent remain employed in the district through June 30, 2023. And that has already happened. So what I want to first do is ask for a motion to approve the compensation in the contract for the 2025-26 year, as noted, 3.25% increase in salary and the $3,500 towards the TRB.
No move.
Oh, you can tell that one.
Second. All right. I just want to take the opportunity before a final vote to note that we continue to be very pleased with Dr. Freeman, with your performance. We are excited when we see things like the teacher evaluation plan that comes out of this district, when we see the professional development that you're providing, when we see the quality of the hires that come in at various building level and administrative positions in this district. These have all had really great impacts on our school and on our students. We do have, in the contract, a number of areas that we consider when we're considering the evaluation. One of those areas is the superintendent's relationship with the board, which I feel continues to be extraordinarily positive. Dr. Freeman is very available, not only to me as chair, but to any member of the board. And that, I think, has been a really positive impact. Other areas include relationship with the community and something I've mentioned a number of years in a row and will mention again because of how important it is, relationship with other leadership in town. Part of the success of a school system that always operates within the context of the town is the relationships that the administration has with other leadership. We find great support from our town. We find great support from our police department. We have great support from Guilford Youth and Family Services. There are a number of really important organizations in town in which, at various levels, we are mutually dependent on each other and really, at times, as a school system require their assistance. And the quality of relationships that Dr. Freeman makes with the partners in various organizations really benefits us tremendously. So that's what I wanted to say, but I do want to give an opportunity for my colleagues to mention as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would argue that the sign of great leadership in a business or a Board of Education is people's willingness or want to come work for you. You know, this is in an area where most districts struggle with employment. We don't. We have people that are doing everything they can from multiple states outside of Connecticut to come work here. And I would also argue that the sign of a great leader is when people do leave, they're on to great things and bigger things. And so that's what we're seeing with a lot of our staff that are sadly leaving us, but going on to major roles in other districts that we just don't have here at this moment because we're fully staffed. So I think one of the best things that, you know, we see in your leadership is people's want to work here, which is fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you.
I will just add, you know, the students. I think it's a big reflection on Dr. Freeman and your administration of this district that, you know, to my colleague's point, not every child is going to go on to college, but those that do, you know, seek out great opportunities, and those that don't still seek out great opportunities and have a great foundation. And that starts at the top with you, and it trickles down to our administrators and our building administrators and our teachers and to the most important and valuable assets that we have in this community, our kids. So I was trying to remind myself that all that we do here and all the hours we put in is so that little kid in second grade is assured that they will read and have an incredible experience and grow as a human being. And so, and to Ralph's point, you know, we don't track them after they leave here, but I would hope to think that they can look back on their education here with positive, you know, resources. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with just the decisions that you make every day. And obviously, we are in support of your work. And as you say, you love working with us. I think we love working with, I know we love working with you. So thank you for having that relationship with us because I think it's very unique. There are a lot of boards that don't have that. So it's really important that we have that and that that continue. So.
When Dr. Freeman first got here, he was one of the youngest superintendents in the state. And.
Time's ticking.
Only to say that relatively inexperienced. And most superintendencies in the state and in the country don't last very long. They go three, four, five, six years. In this case, we have a superintendent. Is this your 13th year?
I think I'm starting my 15th.
15th year. Now, some could argue that's too long and that we're suffering, you know, how do we get rid of somebody for so long? In our case, it needs to be said that we're just as lucky to have him in the 15th year as we were in the first year. And that's an unusual thing to be able to say because we get all the wisdom and experience of somebody who knows this place in and out without any of the loss that comes with being in a place too long. This board wouldn't tolerate that, so people know. And we talk about, you know, what Paul does for us as a superintendent. So I just don't want to take it for granted that we're sort of making an easy decision. Well, he's here, we're going to just keep him here. He's here because, in fact, the board has firmly decided we should keep him here for another year for all the right reasons.
Thank you.
Say, my daughter survived all of her schooling in this district, which, to me, is so odd. She wants to go on to be a teacher, which is amazing. And she has said she's coming back to Guilford at the end of, when the first conference committee, which says a lot. You know of our whole struggles all of our, all these years. For her to say that is pretty amazing. So.
That's fantastic.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the superintendent's contract and compensation for the 25-26 school year. Please say aye. Aye. Opposed? And abstentions? All right, that is unanimous. The second piece of this is then the opportunity to extend the superintendent's contract by one year. This is an annual event, and this is a very commonplace across Connecticut, right? So we have, generally, we start with a three-year superintendent's contract. When we finish the first year, we are looking at compensation for the next year, as we just did. And then we have the opportunity to extend the contract back to a three-year contract. So is there a motion to extend the superintendent's contract for an additional year?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All in favor? All right, that is unanimous as well. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do in the name of being superintendent of this district.
Thank you very much. I look forward to another three years together.
Absolutely. All right, 10, Report of Committees, Policy Committee. Anything else? Operations Committee, anything to add, John?
No, nothing else. We've covered a lot. We're covering operations.
Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee.
We meet in October, and then we're going to probably take up artificial intelligence.
Okay, perfect, that'd be great. Liaisons from town committees, anything from town committees? Education-related, none? And we talked earlier about liaison board of directors. We're going to identify that approach. Number 11, public comments. Again, we do not have anyone from the public here. So we can go to number 12. Closing comments, I'm sorry?
The only closing comment I have is to welcome Mr. Hamel to the table here with us.
No, exciting, very important.
Thank you, I'm happy to hear. The first words I've said the whole meeting so far. I appreciate that.
Well, for the last word.
Absolutely.
I had a question.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry this spirit happens back at 9.2.
Okay.
But in light of 9.2, where we're talking about reviewing readiness of new students for kindergarten, in light of the fact that those three students were also in this circled area of elite kindergarten, how's that work? Is it independent? Is there ever a situation where you might say, no, you're ready, but we don't have the space? We're not going to bring on a new for one. What's the balance?
Yeah, I don't anticipate that we would ever make a decision in that way. So the new kindergarten enrollment says that there is an automatic age in which students, if they are, if they're five years old before September 1st, they're automatically qualified to be enrolled. And then that students who won't be five until December, right, until that secondary day, may enroll if the school district determines that they are ready. It doesn't include any language about space availability. I don't anticipate there would ever be a situation in Guilford where we would assess that a student was ready and still required that parent to hold them rather than adding a section in our school to follow that statute in the spirit in which the statute is written. There's no language about available funding or seats available, which is very different than the way we talk about the Open Choice Program. The Open Choice Program, where we extend seats to students who reside in New Haven, is very specifically based on space being available. But for a resident of Guilford, you're either five by September 1st, or you are deemed ready, and then five by that date certain in December. And I don't see that we would do anything different ever.
Along those lines, do we have numbers for Open Choice for next year? Not yet, right?
We do. We had, I believe it was, eight students who had initially accepted. I have been hesitant to share those too much. I have been hesitant to share those too much, because last year we had six, and over the summer, through attrition, we reduced down to one. Though that one is returning, and we were expecting, I believe, it was eight or nine more who had enrolled. But I wanted to wait until the August meeting to share those and see if there was going to be attrition again. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. All right, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.